I hereby call the August 26th City Council Meeting to order, please stand, and we're going to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, councilors. Councilors, we have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, but after we get to number four, I'm going to recognize Council Cruz on a late file, please. Number one, Mr. Clerk.
We have the acceptors of the minutes of July 22nd, 2019, City Council Meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Accepted of the minutes of August 5th, 2019, special joint meeting of the School Committee and City Council.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
We have the appointment of, reappointment of Joe Miranda of 19 Wallace Street, Brockton, to the Community Cable Television Board for a term of three years.
Refer to Finance Committee.
We have the reappointment of Kenneth Galligan of 25 Messina Drive to the Brockton Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
That, too, referred to Finance Committee. Council Cruz, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to, obviously, there's been some hubbub in the mayor's office over the last months, and something was missed to be sent over, but I do have a late file in the hands of the clerk, but I'd like to make a motion that we accept the late file and act on it this evening under suspension of the rules.
Second.
It's a motion made, properly seconded, to accept the late file. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, that motion carries. We're going to act on the suspension of the rules. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. All opposed, that's going to carry as well. Mr. Clerk, please.
Promotion of firefighter Benjamin D. Denny to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Brockton Fire Department.
Good evening. How are you tonight? Please, please come to the podium. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You have a statement for the council?
No, just thanks for the opportunity for the promotion.
Thank you for your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to take a roll call vote now, please. Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's 11 in the affirmative.
Motion is hereby confirmed. Council Cruz.
Make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion made, properly seconded, reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Does not. Congratulations. Councilors, we're going to take a two-minute recess. We're going to go into number five, please.
Petition to Germanian Three Nominees Trust, DBA Sunny's Car Wash, 40 Chilton Road, Brockton, Mass, for transfer of a garage license located at 10-7 to 10-15 Main Street, Brockton, in council June 19th, 2019. Hearing is signed for August 26th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. All paperwork on file. Fire Department has no objections.
Councilors, a public hearing. I hereby open it. Anyone here in favor, please come forward and state your name for the clerk.
Evening, Mr. President. Attorney Jake Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton. With me is Sonny Aristatamian, who's the principal in Germanian Three Nominee Trust. Little background on who Mr. Aristatamian is. Owns two other major car washes in Brockton, heads for 20 years. The one at Sunny's up at Westgate Mall and the other one on North Main Street. The particular one that we're talking about here is the one down in South Main Street that certainly, as a Brocktonian, knows that there was trouble down there after, after closing hours. The place itself has six bays of self-service, do-your-own-car. That's the all-night situation. The during-the-day situation, there is a detailed express where you go through and have it done. He has anywhere from three to four employees there, and for security purposes, other than cameras, he has one of his employees, who's the manager, lives next door to the property. Correct, Sonny? And so, there is that kind of security there. Sonny is always in Brockton, managing the, all three places. It's a, I think the parking lot itself is in good shape. We are aware, and in fact, I was the one that tried to talk Sonny out of buying that, but again, in the interest of pro-business, to keep, you know, something going like that, Sonny stepped up and he said he'd do whatever necessary to keep it a secure place. Again, we're seven days a week, seven, you know, seven to seven for the detail, excuse me, the express place, and the others go all night, the self-service. That's by coin operation, and it's, I think, $3, Sonny? Sonny lives on Chilton Road, and he's always around, always available, and anybody that's dealt with him knows the type of person he is.
Thank you, Attorney Creedon. Anything further?
I think that's about it.
Consigliere, this is your ward, correct?
It is correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sonny, good evening. Pleasure to have you here, and pleasure to welcome you, you know, to the location, to what used to be Ernie's Touchless Car Wash, which I do business with quite a bit, to be truthful with you, so I'm in and out and down there myself, but, you know, my concern is, I think the attorney also mentioned it, is our concern is what transpires after the hours, after the, after it gets dark and way late into the early morning seems to be when we have some problems, and even Bob had problems as well, so I have to ask you that, I have to, we have to have some type of a correction to that, Sonny, to be truthful with you. You know, I'm not, I don't want, one thing I don't want to do, I never want to put a business out, I really don't, because I think we can all work together with it, and I think you probably understand what has been going on, and your backend is in, where neighbors are right there, they can look out a window, they can see somebody doing some other things, and, you know, I just, I have great, great concern, you know, great concern with that part, but other than that, you know, I wish you the best of luck, or please, we've got to, we've got to do something.
He obviously has had no problems at any of the other two places, but I think it's important that they, through you, Mr. President, that they know that this investment was a little over $2 million, so, I mean, his heart and soul is in it.
I know, I know.
If he doesn't do something to keep that security and the confidence of the city councils in that area, then it's a big investment loss for him.
And it's the same, it's the same. You have the, you have the place on Belmont Street, too, which is in my ward as well, and, you know, I don't have any problems up there. Once in a while, I see them work a little bit after hours when they shouldn't, but, you know, I don't see any trouble, and I see everything, you know, kept clean, and I know he also do a lot of work with U-Haul up in that location, am I correct? Yeah, because somebody brought that to my attention, I've gone up there and seen them. You're right, okay, but you understand where I'm coming from, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not denying, I just want to make sure that we can do something down there, and anytime you need to be in touch with me, please do, okay? All right, thank you, Sonny, thank you.
Counsel, you all set?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Nacastro, please.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm, I represent Ward Four, which is across the street from the Touchless Car Wash, and I, too, have had complaints about the after-hours activity there, and the noise, and the partying all night long, and I would very much like your reassurance that you're going to address this for the sake of the neighborhood.
We're working close with the police to see what we can do about it. It's also, it's a Saturday night, after 2:00.
That's when the trouble's been recently, after 2:00, probably coming from Lucindo's place, but some of them anyway.
Right.
We're working on that problem with the police.
Yes, but there have been evenings when I've left Cape Cod Cafe on Fridays at 9:00, and there's, there's revelers on the car wash property, so it's not just late at night. And so, I pointed that out to you, and I ask you to please address it for the sake of all of the neighbors who are being disturbed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Council Asak, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. As Attorney Creedon stated, Sonny owns multiple businesses in the city, and he's not new to, we've seen him many times before us, and a few of those businesses are in Ward Seven, and I have to tell you, I have not received any complaints or any calls of any of his existing businesses, so I put my faith in that if he's telling us he's going to, you know, take, make sure that everything is in order, then it, that's the way it's going to be, so I hope you support this license transfer, garage license transfer, because I do, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councilors have questions?
Just one.
Consigliere, follow-up, please.
Yeah, just a follow-up point, Sonny, and if, when you're talking to the police department, if you're having any troubles or difficulties there, please let me know, because I, I'll talk right to the chief, and I'll talk to a couple of the captains, so that we can, that's how we did it the last time with Bob, when we had this trouble, about four, five months ago, so I go directly to. I don't work around, I go directly to, so.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else here in favor? Anyone else here in favor, third and final time, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in the chamber in opposition relative to this matter? Anyone?
No, no.
No, wrong hearing.
No, no.
On this, on this matter with the car wash? This is the, the car wash downtown?
No, she's, she's at the other.
Okay. Anyone else here in the chamber in opposition? That's the third and final time. I'll close that part of the hearing. Matter now comes before us. If you want a grant, please raise your hand. If you wish not to grant, please raise your hand. It's hereby granted. We will now go on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much, have a good evening. Thank you.
Petition of Valdez-Cruz Management LLC for a transfer of a garage license located at 743 Warren Avenue, in council June 26th, 2019. Hearing is signed for August 26th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. All paperwork is on file. The Fire Department has no objections.
It's a public hearing. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward to the podium, state your name.
Evening again, Mr. President. Attorney Jake Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway. With me is Ed Valdez-Cruz, who is the new owner of that premises, and the former owner, Franz Joseph, who had it for almost 20 years. I can, I believe, short-circuit some of the concerns here. We are tonight looking, Mr. President, and members of the council, to get the garage license through. Law, obviously, is very clear that the owner must be the holder of the garage license. The other two licenses, we've been dealing for several months with Deputy Williams, who sent us pictures of all the things that they wanted Mr. Valdez-Cruz to update. Some were minor, some were major. As of Friday, they came back and inspected. We don't have the letters yet, so I'm suggesting on the motor vehicle repair and on the auto body, that that go over to the next meeting, but that we talk about just the garage license.
It's for tonight, anyways.
Not on the agenda tonight, those two matters.
Just the garage license.
Just the garage license, good. But again, he'll be willing to answer any questions, of course, I can, too. It's a very old building, was built in, I think, 1946, very tired. When the Franz owned it, we had a number of incidences as far as the condition, if you will, of the lot and of the building. The inside of the building was very outdated, almost hazardous, if you will. Ed and his family, his brother, they, they own two other places, Rosendale, where they've been in business for over 30 years, he and his brother, and with an auto body and a spray situation, and they, he would testify under oath, never had a police incident there. He also owns a restaurant, I forget where he said that was, but.
It's in Boston, Rocksbury.
In, in, in Rocksbury. But he, again, is a hands-on guy, has already, and again, Deputy Williams sent actual pictures to me, which I passed on to him about a month and a half ago, a whole bunch of what would appear to be violations, you know, the outdated sprinkler, all those kinds of things, old toilet that's, you know, was not good, some hazardous materials near what could be fire things. He's remedied, he tells me, and I did meet with the deputy earlier this evening, and he does email me back and forth. I think we're going to get a letter from the Fire Department indicating that those situations have been addressed and completed, okay? Those are the motor vehicle and the other ones, and hopefully, we, when we get up in front of this board, the council on those other two licenses will be successful. But right now, it's just the garage license.
Consigliere, you're in. Your ward?
It is. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening again, gentlemen. I met with the attorney and both these gentlemen, the co-owner, the owner that's coming to be, and naturally, the owner that's leaving, in regards to this location, which is right at the corner of Warren Ave and Myrtle Street, so I will have some stipulations of ours that I will present after I make a couple of comments, but when I spoke, I spoke with the gentleman and with Attorney Creed, and I spoke to Attorney Creed this afternoon at length, and I was even there this morning, visiting with the people that he had working there, and I spoke with you on the telephone at the same, at the same time. So, my concern was, as I spoke to you, was naturally the building in itself and the building needing some work, cleanliness, some cleanup. My concern is with, with parking on the street, because we've had difficulty over the years with the other owners and the people that probably were running it under, under, you know, Francis, that, you know, they were parking on the street, flatbeds in the way, you couldn't turn around, you couldn't turn on the corner, if you were taking a right, if you're coming south on Warren Ave to Myrtle and going up Myrtle, you couldn't. There was no room, because naturally, you have the other existing building across the way that generates a lot of traffic as well. Those are some of the current concerns I've had, as well as, you know, there's been a couple of neighbors with some concerns, one of which I think we also addressed was, and we'll address it further when we, when we get the, the body repair license before us, when it details spray painting, which is not there at this particular time. This has to be just for vehicle repair maintenance at this point, correct, Mr. Attorney?
That is correct.
I mean, they understand, he understands that, and I, and I don't want it to be in any other way, and I do want it to be controlled, is what I want it to be, and please keep vehicles off the street, you've got property in the back, and there's quite a bit of, I know there's some confusion sometimes of who owns what property because of another neighbor, it makes some confusion, and that's something that still has to be worked out, and I don't know if it'll be worked out in my lifetime, to be truthful with you, but in any case, I just, I just want to make sure that we're operating in the right, in the right manner, so.
We did have a big discussion about the spray situation.
Right.
Ed tells me that spraying means a whole, the whole car.
Right.
They send them out, ever since he owned it, because of the situation that we've notified by the city.
Right.
When there is, for example, an auto repair, when there is a fender that's been dented, the product comes as a whole brand-new fender, but it hasn't been painted, so most places allow the, the, without a spray booth situation, to paint the fender. Again, we've agreed that we're not going to do things until we get.
Right.
All that other situations.
Right, and the, and the deputy chief made that clear, it was all of us when we were over here, yeah, okay.
And we won't be open Sundays.
Okay. So at this point, I, I mean, my stipulations for, for your hours is the way I see it. I'd like to see it Monday through Friday, like 7:30 to 6:00. Saturday, 7:30 to 5:00, and then I would say, as we all do, close Sundays and holidays.
Counsel, I don't believe you can put stips on a garage license, only on the auto repair or the, the, the body.
Well, I don't want them open all night long, Mr. Clerk, so what do we do?
He wants to put stips. I don't believe you can put stips on a garage license.
Can't put stipulations on a garage, no.
But when they reappear before us, you can put the stipulations at that time.
The police, police.
But on the record, it could be noted that.
Yes.
It'll be addressed.
But the next time, we may not even be ready for that, so I don't want a place that's going to be working till 11:00 o'clock at night.
Counsel, I'll let you. Go ahead, by all means, put it on to the record, the minutes you want, and we'll reiterate and get it in two weeks.
I mean, what are we doing? I mean, we'll have them open 24 hours, and that can't happen.
The question on the garage license is just the number of cars that are going to be stored overnight.
Right, I didn't get to that part yet.
That's the question. That's the only question on the garage license.
Okay.
We have a problem, again, even though the garage license is putting those hours in there.
I do want you to, I want you to adhere to those hours right now, and then we'll work it if it's something different. We can do that, correct? And no more than, no more than, I think it's always been no more than six cars there anyways left overnight. Am I right? Francis, you may know that, but, right, it's always been that way, so I'll be pleased with that, but I need stipulations, or, you know, I'll be going around at 3:00 in the morning, seeing that you're open, I don't want to do that, okay? All right. I thought you'd see it my way, and some other people need to start to look at it differently, I guess, but in any case, those are the stipulations that I make, so I put them in a form of a motion if someone wants to accept it.
Second.
I have, before you guys go on.
Nope, sorry, ma'am. I'm going to get, get you up here. Not yet, though.
Okay.
All in favor of the stips? All in favor of the stipulations?
Could we read it, I'm sorry, read it into the record again?
Relative to the, it's still a hearing, but relative to the, to the, you want it Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. Close Sundays and holidays. Point of information?
Point of information.
Is that by agreement with the parties, Mr. President?
Yes. We said earlier we would go along with it, and you've stated again.
Okay.
Counselors, just for procedural matters, giving some, some leeway here, and I concur with Counselor, he wants to get on the records. We will, when we revisit this matter relative to repair and auto body, we'll have to restate it and reiterate at that time for the record, just want to let you know that. The stipulations were made in a form of a motion, it was properly seconded. All in favor of the stipulations, as stated by the Counselor? All opposed, the stips carry. Counselor, any other?
I'm also at this time, Counsel.
Counselor Nacastro.
There, there's, continuing on with your hearing, Mr. President, there is someone here to speak in opposition.
Right, I'm not there yet. Do you have any questions for the applicant or the attorney?
I just wanted to say, Ward Four is across the street. We are very concerned about there not being cars parked all along the road, and otherwise, I echo everything that my colleague, Counselor Eary, said. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lodge McGarry, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this corner has been a historic problem from my days in the 90s. Mr. Creedon, you were up here representing, I think, across the street back in those days.
No, I was defending, I think, Franz against the fellow across the street, but that's okay.
How many cars are we looking at on the lot, since that's part of the garage license?
There is a grid that I have that shows 14 spaces, which I will submit when we have the, the other situation. 14, it's 14, eight by 10 spaces.
Because that, that's a, it seems to be a problem throughout the city now, is that we're grant, the license is being granted for X number of cars, and then as time passes, people seem to forget how to count. So I hope, you know, I welcome a new owner down in that area and hope that it helps clean up that corner. It is, I travel up Menlo Street routinely, up and down Menlo Street, so many times I will try and avoid traffic and go up, try and go up Myrtle Street, so.
Counselor, for the record, I've told all my recent clients that I'm 100% in favor of the code enforcement situation that we've had in the last few years, and I make sure, because I reject a lot of people that want to hire me, make sure that they're willing not only to do it, but also have the energy and the money to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and I concur with Ward Three Counselor on, on his stipulations. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Councilors, again, the garage license is relative to how many cars it can store overnight. It's maxed at six. That's what, that's what this matter is. Any other questions from the councilors for the applicant or his attorney? Seeing none, is there anyone else here in the chamber in favor? Third and final time, anyone here in favor? That part of the hearing is closed. Now, if there's anyone here in opposition, please come to the podium. If you could just kindly state your name and your address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anna Silvada. I've been living that property for 20 years, have a lot of issues from the beginning.
And the address is?
21 Myrtle.
21 Myrtle, thank you.
When I first purchased the home in 1999, before Franz Joseph purchased 743 Warren Ave, I was outside in my garden, pulling the weeds from the beans that had a plant. This happened around May, April, May. He came in, I was facing the back of my home, he patted me on the right side of the shoulder, he told me, "This is my property. When you're done collecting the fruits of it, we have to divide." The first time I met him, I didn't know him, coming from Boston, fresh, new here, with my children. The times go on, little by little, Franz Joseph kept encroaching my property, little by little. Two years ago, he came in with a Velazquez Construction, with a bunch of men, into my property, dumping trash, I don't know from where, I thought it was, was from Boston, because when I called the police, I thought that they were coming from Boston with many things, dumping. Over the years, for 20 years, I've been cleaning the property, back in, in right side of my home, in front of the Myrtle Street, a lot of dumping. As of right now, if you go there, you see pieces of cars dumping the property, tires. I've sent the mayor that passed away pictures of it, and I have pictures of it to prove it. Activities, no longer ago, it comes different men. On his truck, I say Velazquez Construction, but I don't know who he is. For two years, Franz Joseph, I think, allowed him to do this. For 20 years, I've been suffering, called the police, went to court, nothing happens. Recently, somebody began to help me with this matter. I do not want, I, I am sick and tired of it. I don't want any more trash dumping on my property. The space he has is very, very little space. I think, I'm not sure, that's the reason why he's been encroaching in my property over the years. I had a paper that said, on 2003, he purchased the property with his wife, and then again, I don't know. Up to this time, I don't really know this man. Sometimes the police ask me, "What is his name? Joseph? Franz? Franz Joseph?" I don't really know him. I'm a residential there for 20 years. I have a concerns, there's many activities. I'm awake sometime 3:00 in the morning. I go to bed midnight, 1:00, 12:00, at different times. When I begin to call the police over this matter, as they're coming with the trucks, I've called the firemen, they had on my Christmas tree a truck leaking oil. I called the firemen, the firemen went in, they remove it. When the fireman leaves, more staff come in, the police has gone and advised them, the police leaves, they come back, dumping, back and forth. What I'm telling you, where it's where I see with my own eyes every day. What he has my land that he took, that he's been dumping trash every time I clean, as of right now, I'm not home, but as of right now, you go into these places, you see still dumping, and there has no stop. What he's transferring to Velazquez Construction also transpired on my property for over two years, 2017 to now, and I don't remember the date exactly. There would be, I believe, about two weeks ago or more, about, I don't know for sure. A young teenager, a guy. about two weeks ago or more, about, I don't know for sure. A young teenager, a guy, a different guy, because I don't really know if it's Velazquez, what his name is. I see different guys go in. One time, there was a bunch of guys spat on my face. I will tell you, when he first arrived in May, he came in, he says to me, in May of two years ago, "Oh, I bought this property. This property is mine." At that time, because Joseph had removed my garage that used to be there, and the tree. This is everything that I remember I'm telling you right now. Velazquez Construction came two years ago, removed a tree, shaking the tree, moved the foundation of my house. The toilet was moved, and I said to him, "You know, you going to bring my house down?" He says to me, "Oh, sell me your house." I say, "Where I'm gonna go?" He says, "Go back to your country." As of right now, you go to my house right now, where the toilet is, that he shook up the foundation of the house and the toilet, I have a leaking coming down, and I have no paper in front of me. I'm telling you, the truth has happened in many years of all these things, and I'm asking you for help, because I've been suffering for all this year with this.
So, just to explain, and thank you, and you and I have spoken about this before.
Yes.
We'll get to you too, sir. Just to explain the process. So, they're here tonight for the garage license, which you freely are allowed to oppose, but the garage license is just how many cars they can keep inside at night. Now, in a few weeks, you're invited to come back to us, because they'll be before us again on the auto repair license and also the auto body license. And those are, those are matters that, again, the Ward 3 Counsel will address, and any Counselors will address, if, you know, after hours working, spraying, stuff like that. So, tonight, it's just about the garage, but what you just shared with us, I know all of our Counselors appreciate that. We feel bad for that, but remember, you are invited to come back again in the future, in a couple of weeks, for the other two, and you'll be more than able to come up again. And at that time, Counselor Inari will be able to address some of the other issues as well, and any Counselor. But I'm not trying to cut you off. If you have some more to say, by all means, and then the gentleman can speak as well. But there's going to be another hearing as well, in the near future, for these people, these applicants.
So, he's asking for the license to operate this?
Tonight, the only thing that's before the City Council is a garage license. It's an exchange. It's a purchase. So, what we are addressing right now is strictly the garage license component. In the future, there'll be two other components. There'll be the repair license and the auto body license. And again, you, any applicant, I mean, any applicant will have attorney, and then anybody in opposition is allowed to come as well, and you'll be notified as well.
Okay. As of right now, I will tell you my truth. I objection this thing, this transfer of this next to the residential area. A lot of more things that I haven't said, health issues, too many things that I have not said to you. That garage right here, next to the residential area, with everything that's going on, with many things. I see it as a, it's a health issues. When you, when, when the police come, yes, they do what they're supposed to do, and the police leave, they don't do what they're supposed to do.
And we, again, when the matter comes before us next time, that's, that's when those issues should be addressed as well. You can be noted on the record as opposing, and the gentleman behind you can speak as well. But right now, it's strictly a garage repair transfer before us, which, Counsel, I'll recognize you one second, which would be relative to how many automobiles they can have inside at night, which is limited to six. Counselor Inari also limited the hours, which we will have to revisit again at the next hearing.
Six car in the back.
Correct.
Be aware to see he doesn't have a space in the back for six car.
Okay.
You go, you check.
Thank you very much, Ms. Silviera.
Yeah.
Sir, good evening. Your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for your attention. I'm Father John Keane. I am with the Franciscan Friars of the Atonement at the Chapel of Our Savior in Brockton, right across from the West Gate Mall. And I've been there for about three years, and Anna is one of our communicants. And one of the things that really struck me about the integrity of Anna is she has a son in the United States Marines. She has another son who's studying for the clergy. Her mother is at home, and she has her little boy, Joseph, here with her today. She's honest and sincere, and she bought this property 20 years ago, when she was a young girl, and she has raised her family of five children, all by herself, because her husband left her. These are tragic events that happen often, and I hear them many times in the confession. But when it comes to a point where you feel that your property is in jeopardy, she came to me. And I have to admit that the property outside her home, to the left, does look a little dumpy. So, I said, "Anna, please call. I got junk." Well, "I got junk," said, "It was a little bit too much for them, and she'll have to get a landscaper." But today, and other days previous to this, she's been out on the property trying to clean it up. There are, of course, tires on the, on the property, but she has hopes in the future that someday, this part of her property can be donated to the church. So, I'm here to speak on behalf of the integrity of Anna Silviera, and hope you all will take that into consideration. Her one big fear is encroachment. Is there here, I want you to think very, very seriously, encroachment is something that should never happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Thank you for being here, Father. Counselor Derencourt, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna ask her a few questions. You don't mind if she come back on the mic?
No, by all means. Ms. Silviera, if you could come back up. Counselor Derencourt had a couple of questions, please.
Hi, good evening. I just want to thank you for taking the time to come here, so I just have a few questions for you. Have you had a chance to talk to Mr. Velazquez about some of the issues that you've been facing in the past? Have you spoke with him about what happened in the past?
I don't know if you have heard everything that I've said here.
No, I'm talking about the new person who's about to get that transfer. I'm not talking about Mr. Joseph. I'm talking about the new tenant that you're about to have there. Have you had a chance to talk to him? I listened to what you have to say. The reason I'm asking that question is that I want to know whether or not you both somewhat like sat down and go through some of the issues that you have been facing, according to you, for the past so many years. So, have you had a chance?
So many years with who?
Well, in regard to that, that space, you said that, you know, it's not good next to your house and all of that.
Now, can you explain to me?
Let me explain it to you. So, my point to you is that, it's like, given the fact that, it seems like you are very unhappy about what's going on, and as we speak, according to what the President just said, so we are not giving them a license away as we speak. So, it is a transfer. So, with that being said, although you complain about what, I mean, Mr. Joseph had been doing in the past, given the fact that this is a new person who's about to take responsibility under that space, so have you had a chance to sit down and talk to that person in terms of like whether or not he will be able to clean it and making sure that some of the issues that you have will not be repeated in the future? That's my, that's my question to you.
You know, I can't answer that, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any other questions, Counselors? Is there anyone else here in opposition? Third and final time, anyone here in opposition? That part of the hearing is closed relative to the matter before us, which is strictly the garage license. And now, I'm gonna-
Mr. President, may, can I make a brief statement?
It's closed.
Concerning what you said.
Counselor, you may.
Yes, just a question of Attorney Creedon. The issues that were just raised.
Yes.
Am I correct that they related to Franz and Saladini Joseph and not to Mr. Velazquez?
Absolutely. It's been to court three different times in the last three years, with her bringing a complaint against Mr. Joseph over this very same issue. All hearings took hours. She testified on those three occasions for hours. The cases were thrown out because of two things. One is, we had to do a survey and did it. It's land court, and for those of the lawyers who hear, that's the best possible title you can have. It is defined, and we had, we went further and had the police put cameras up, because she was making these wild allegations about Franz or his workers. And again, she said the police doesn't, didn't cooperate with her. They put up video cameras and found all of those things not to be true. And I understand her situation.
Counselors, we're getting a little bit off point here. The matter before us is a simple garage license transfer with a new owner and the existing owner. Any of the other matters that are germane or that are brought up, we're gonna have a later date for the other two license. So, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna entertain granting strictly the garage license with a hand vote. All in favor of granting the garage license, please raise your hand. All opposed? We'll take a roll call vote on that then, please. Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Derencourt?
Yes.
Inari?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montigan?
Yet.
Nacastro? Sullivan?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, two in the negative.
The garage license transfer has passed, but remember, those that came, Father and Ms. Silviera, you'll be invited and welcome to come back here when the two matters that are germane to what the discussion was, and we'd encourage you and ask you to come back at that time as well. Okay? We're gonna move on to the next agenda item, please.
We have the report of the Audit Committee for its meeting of July 24, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee meeting of August 19, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Plymouth County Commissioners submitting a warrant in the amount of $151,676.43 under the county treasurer for payment of the Plymouth County tax for fiscal year 2020.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the DPW Commissioner requesting authorization to accept monies awarded and under the Commonwealth for Mass Department of Environmental Protection as part of the gap-to-grant funding program, any amount of $200,000, which requires no match, to be used for the replacement of an existing non-efficient positive displacement blower with an energy-efficient turbo blower at the city's advanced water reclamation facilities, which is projected to save the city an estimated $41,000 a year and $293,000 kilowatt annually.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Add to, accepted and placed on file.
The CFO relative to the same.
That also is accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the superintendent of Parks requesting a transfer of grant funds, any amount of $16,261.60 from Parks and Recreation, JR Park renovations, to City of Brockton, Parks and Recreation, and Playground renovation. This transfer is for unexpended funds from the renovation of JR Park, completed in 2009, to assist in closing the gap between the amount appropriated by the Commonwealth and the cost of the projected renovations to Harold Bent Playground. Improvements include removal of existing tennis courts, repaving, and installation of three volleyball courts and one foot sole court.
Accepted and placed on file.
The mayor recommending the same.
Add to, accepted and placed on file.
And the CFO relative to the same.
Also, accepted and placed on file.
The chief of the fire department requesting authorization to accept and expend $4,000 from the Commonwealth for Mass Department of Public Health. The fire department intends to use these funds to ban the upkeep of the mass decontamination units. No match is required.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Add to, accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Also, accepted and placed on file.
From the chief of police department requesting authorization to accept the spent grant monies related to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, fiscal 20, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative grant award, in the amount of $430,000. There is no match required, but there is an in-kind service match provided.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Add to, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also, accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the chief of police department requesting authorization to accept and expend grant monies related to the fiscal 2020, public safety answering point, and regional emergency communication center support, and incentive grant any amount of $365,586.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Counselors, add to is accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the grant coordinator of the police department requesting that the city council authorize the acceptance of expenditures of the total grant funds in the amount of $275,110.27 from Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department, fiscal 20, State 911 Training Grant. These funds will be used to reimburse overtime for ETDs, police officers, and fire department, emergency medical dispatch personnel to attend 16 hours of mandatory E91 continuing education training for annual certification, and to pay State 911 Department-approved certified training vendors to conduct classes at the Brockton Police Department. There is no match required.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Counselors, also accepted and placed on file.
We have an order amending licensing and business regulations for marijuana business, section 1.009b2 of the licensing and business regulation is hereby amended, in council March 11, 2019. Ready to refer to standing committee on audits. That report was favorable.
Questions on passage to a third reading by a hand vote. All in favor to a third reading? All opposed? It passes to a third reading.
An order amending revised auditors of the City of Brockton, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2, composition, that Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2 of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton be amended to increase the number of fire department captains by one, from 17 to 18, for a limited period of time, subject to a sunset clause, in council June 24, 2019. Ready to refer to standing committee on audits. That report was favorable.
Questions on passage to a third reading by a hand vote. If you're in favor, please raise your hand. If you're opposed, it's passed to a third reading, Counselors.
An audit amending Chapter 1 of the revised auditors, Chapter 19, Article 2, Section 19-21 of the revised auditors is hereby amended relative to police chief, in council June 24, 2019. Ready to refer to standing committee on audits. That report was unfavorable.
Question is on passage to a third reading by a hand vote. If you're in favor, please raise your hand to a third reading. If you're opposed, better do a roll call vote on that one. I didn't see it. Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
Mr. President?
Oh, Counselor, I'll recognize you first.
Yeah. Mr. President, just on the motion, it's, in my opinion, somewhat of a moot issue. Section 60 of the Charter of the City of Brockton reads, "Upon the adoption of Plan B, all heads of departments and members of municipal boards, except the school committee, officials appointed by their governor and assessors, if elected by the people, as their terms of office expire, shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council. But the city solicitor shall be appointed and may be removed by the mayor without confirmation by the city council. This section shall apply to the city solicitor in office when Plan B becomes operative." The charter was not only adopted by the state legislature, but it was also adopted by the voters of this city. So, in my opinion, and we can ask our legislative counsel for a formal opinion, whatever we do tonight, the police chief is the head of a department, he's appointed by the mayor, and he's confirmed by the city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor President, do you have?
Yeah, I reiterated the same thing at the ordinance committee meeting, that unless the state law says otherwise, that the department heads are subject to appointment by the mayor and confirmation by the city council. Although, that's been adopted by practice in the City of Brockton is another issue. But it was, in my opinion, that there was nothing in the state law that prevented the ordinance from passing.
Thank you.
Received an unfavorable vote in the ordinance.
Okay. So, now, questions on a passage to a third reading, and we're gonna do by a roll call vote. So, if you vote yes, you want it to be passed to a third reading? Is that correct, even though it was unfavorable?
Correct.
Yep.
Asak?
No.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Derencourt?
No.
Inari?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
No.
McGary?
No.
Montigan?
No.
Nacastro?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
That's nine in the negative, two in the affirmative. It does not pass to a third reading.
Don't set.
Yep, go on to 31, please.
Audit acceptance of expenditures of total grant funds, any amount of- Order acceptance of expenditures of total grant funds, any amount of $312,615.40 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Municipal Volatility Preparedness Program Action Grant to the mayor's office Municipal Volatility Preparedness Program Action Grant Fund in Council, July 22, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Acceptance of expenditures of the total grant funds in the amount of up to $20,000 from Plymouth County District Attorney's Office Fiscal 2017 Violent Gain in Gun Crime Reduction Program Grant, Project Safe Neighborhoods to Brockton Police Department Fiscal 17 Violent Fiscal 2017 Violent Gain in Gun Crime Reduction Program, Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Fund in Council, July 22, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Order acceptance and expenditures of the total grant in the amount of $46,971.40 from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Mental Health, Fiscal 2020 Massachusetts Jail Arrest Division Program to City of Brockton Police Department of Mental Health, 2020 Massachusetts Jail Arrest Division Program Fund in Council, July 22, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Resolved to invite a representative from National Grid to address the concerns of the community regarding the recent manhole cover explosions in Council, June 24, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, kindly read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
An order amending Chapter 2 of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton be it ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton, Section 2-28 compensation is hereby amended.
For the ordinance committee.
Order that Sections 26B to 26E inclusive of Chapter 111 of the Mass General Laws, uh, Chapter 111, Section 26B through 26E, be in hereby is accepted by the City of Brockton in accordance with Section 26A of Chapter 111 of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 26A.
For the ordinance committee.
Order that the petition to the general court accompanied by a bill for a special law related to the City of Brockton to be filed with an attested copy of this order, be in hereby is approved under Clause I, 1 of Section 8 of Article 2, as amended of the amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only and act relative to the appointment of an executive director of Health and Human Services in the City of Brockton.
For the ordinance committee, please.
An order be it ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton as follows. Part 2, Revised Auditors, is hereby amended by adding the following, Chapter 25, Department of Health and Human Services.
That is also referred to ordinance.
Order that the mayor and/or the real estate custodian be authorized to accept on behalf of the City of Brockton a parcel of land containing approximately 1.4121. It is located and known as Plot 30 Bridge Street, more particularly described as parcel identification number 128-337.
It's gonna be referred to real estate and finance.
Order that common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Farnham Street extending from the end of 1965 layout, naughtily a distance of about 438 feet, more or less, and for the purpose it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away.
That also is referred to real estate and finance.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Belding Circle extending from Farnham Street westly to Beld- Belding Circle Extension, a distance of 590 feet, more or less, and for that purpose it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city.
That is referred to real estate and finance.
An order is ordered that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Belding Circle Extension, extending from Belding Circle northwesterly 253.79 feet, more or less, and for that purpose it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton.
That is also referred to real estate and finance.
Order that the common necessity and the convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Haskell Street extending from Hubbardan Avenue naughtily to Belding Circle, a distance of about 663 feet, more or less, and for that purpose it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton.
Counsel, is referred to real estate and finance.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require a layout and acceptance of Leahy Road extending from North Quincy Street easterly to Roslin Road, a distance of about 1,335 feet, more or less, and for that purpose it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton.
That also is referred to real estate and finance.
Order acceptance and expenditures of the grant funds, any amount of $200,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass Department of Environmental Protection Gap 2 Grant Fund Programming to City of Brockton Department of Public Works Gap 2 Grant Funding Program Grant Fund.
Refer to finance, please.
Order of acceptance and expenditures of total grant funds, any amount of $4,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass Department of Public Health Fiscal 2020 Mass Decantabination Unit Grant Fund to Brockton Fire Department 2020 Mass Decantabination Unit Grant Fund.
Refer to finance committee.
Mr. President.
Counsel.
Mr. President, on that matter, I move to suspend the rules and act on it tonight so the fire department can expend those funds.
Motion on the floor, it was properly seconded to act on the suspension of rules for agenda item number 46. Are you in favor of acting on the suspension? All opposed. We will act on the suspension of the rules, and we will do a roll call vote relative to this agenda item, please.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Orders hereby approved.
Order's acceptance and expenditures of total grant funds in the amount of $365,586 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department Fiscal 2020 Public Safety Answering Point and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grants to Brockton Police Department Fiscal 2020 Public Safety Answering Point and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant Fund.
Counsel, I'll, if you want to entertain this one for a $4,000 grant as well?
$4,000?
No.
$365,500.
That's all we have to do suspension, isn't it? Yeah, we're on, we're on, are we on number 48?
We're on 48.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yep. Lost track of that one. Sorry. That's referred to finance committee.
Now let's do it on the suspension.
Yeah, I'm good now, thanks.
Okay. Acceptance and expenditures of total grant funds, any amount of $275,110.27 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department Fiscal 20 State 911 Training Grant to Brockton Police Department Fiscal 20 State 911 Training Grant Fund.
Refer to finance, please.
Order acceptance and expenditures of total grant funds, any amount of $430,000 from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services Fiscal 20 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant to Brockton Police Department Fiscal 2020 Fiscal 20 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant Fund.
For the finance, please.
Order the transfer of grant funds, any amount of $16,261.60 from Parks and Recreation, JR Park Renovations, the City of Brockton Parks and Recreation Bent Playground Renovations.
For the finance, Mr. President.
Resolved.
Counselor.
On number 51, uh, so that they can get the bids out and do the work, I would move to suspend the rules and act on that tonight.
Second.
Second.
Motion on the floor, it's properly seconded to act on the suspension of rules. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, we're gonna act on the suspension, roll call vote, please.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bowregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Montahan?
Yes.
DeCastro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Hereby approved.
Mr. President, I move for reconsideration.
Second.
The motion does not prevail.
The motion for reconsideration, the motion doesn't prevail, it's properly seconded. All in favor of reconsideration, raise your hand. All opposed, reconsideration does not prevail.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the City of Brockton to enter a tax increment finance agreement with New Westgate Mall LLC encompassing the property described as above whereby provided New Westgate Mall LLC satisfies certain conditions more fully described in the tax financing agreement, and be it further resolved that upon execution of the tax increment finance agreement, the mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the City of Brockton petition to Mass Economic Assistance Coordinated Council for its approval and endorsement of the tax increment financing agreement.
That's referred to finance committee.
All the items on the agenda are available in their entirety for review in the city clerk's office for all interested parties.
Uh, Counsel, uh, clerk, I have two late files, I believe.
We have a communication from the city planner requesting authorization to accept and expend total grant funds, any amount of $300,000 from Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Grant to City of Brockton Planning and Economic Development Brownfield Assessment Grant Fund. These funds will be used for the continued, continued implementation of the 2016 Downtown Action Strategy and the 2017 Urban Revitalization Plan to create a liv- a livable mixed-use, mixed-income, trans-oriented neighborhood and commercial center. There is no match required.
That communication is accepted and placed on file.
It's communication from the mayor recommending the same.